Denise Hernandez on the screen, designated hitter.
Watch how first he hits you.
That's right.
You ready? Okay. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let's stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody again. Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Mr. Christopher Poole.
Here.
Mr. John Moody.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Muns.
Here.
Mr. Derek Tautlet.
Here.
Mr. Chris Williams.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. And proof of publication.
The items are appetizing the Tampa Bay Times on May 1st, 2024, June 5th, 2024, and July 10th, 2024, and by affidavit of certified mailing and sent to the state.
Okay, thank you. I don't believe we have any minutes.
Correct.
So for those of you who haven't been here before, we're the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. We make recommendations and hold public hearings, recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners as to comprehensive land amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, a final decision may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the County Commission, it would be important for you to attend the appropriate County Commission meeting. Those of you who aren't familiar with the stages of the meeting, we have three areas. We have continuances, we have consent, and we have regular items. Continuances are where the staff or the applicant has requested a continuance for any number of reasons. It's been our tradition to grant those requests unless they're extenuating circumstances. We have consent agenda, and those are items that we'll go through one at a time. If, when we read the item off, you want it to be heard, you want a discussion, or you have a comment about it, raise your hand, and we'll pull it off the consent agenda, and we'll put it on to the regular items. And that is the third area, is the regular items, and those are items where we have people here to make their presentation and others that may want to speak or ask questions about those things. Applicants will have three minutes to make their presentation, and respondents or questioners will have three minutes to ask their questions, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back up and respond to those questions. And then we have area, time, before we start the formal meeting, we're going to ask that, is there anybody here that needs to speak on something that's not on today's agenda?
Mr. Chair, we do. We have Jennifer Sini, who would like to speak during public comment.
Okay, we'll have that very shortly, Ms. Sini. If you'd like, just wait a minute. So with regard to the applications that will be heard today, if there has been anyone who's made a written request at least 24 hours prior to this meeting for extra time, it may be granted, but I haven't received any requests. Are there any requests, Denise?
We do not have any requests for additional time.
Okay, thank you very much. So this would be a great time to put your phones on silent position so you won't interrupt anybody. And I guess I better check my own.
Wouldn't want to get in trouble with the chairman.
No, throw myself out. Okay. So... For those of you who plan to give testimony today, if you'll stand, raise your right hand. Be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony or backing of this is true, so help you God?
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Sini, would you like to come forward, please? State your name and address, please, for the record, and to the microphone. For any of those who do come up and speak today, we need you to not speak before you get up front because we need to record it all. So we need to speak in the microphone, and that's why we need your name and address. So, go ahead.
Jennifer Sini, 25605 Alba Blossom Lane, Wesley Chapel. I'm here to give you your invasives lesson. However, before I start, I want to tell you that I am confused. I understand that you want to do a good job and give good advice to the B O C C, but Florida State Statute 163.317.4, Section C, is clear that when you sit as the land planning agency and review proposed L D Cs, L D Rs, or amendments thereto, you vote only as to an item's consistency with a comprehensive plan. Unlike when you sit as the Planning Commission under L D C 204.1, where you have much latitude to discuss, to rewrite, to condition, to recommend, to opine on many things. When a staff is given a board directive to establish a program for controlling invasives, they write a proactive program. It comes to you to vote yea or nay on whether it complies with our comprehensive plan. Asking staff to continuously rewrite and now refocus on a provision in the landscape ordinance means you have effectively tried to write this ordinance yourselves. In my opinion, I respectfully suggest that this is not your job. In my opinion, the reason 905.2E, Section 5, has never worked, that's the landscaping ordinance, is that it is an afterthought in the landscaping ordinance. With your changes, you have pushed the invasive control back to a reactive, unsupported code compliance function. Again, a mere footnote, never expected to be assessed as part of a site plan, not proactive, not a program, not anything effective. I told you on July 11th to remember two things, gopher tortoises and pollinators. That's because gopher tortoises are important to over 300 species, like the burrowing owl, the gopher frog, eastern indigo snake, Florida pine snake, and previously eastern diamondback snake. I know, a lot of snakes. But they are very important for keeping rodent population down, which is often a vector for diseases. It's all connected, just like the little fish that gets eaten by the big fish. The loss of habitat through overdevelopment is excessive, but invasives are good at killing habitat also, including gopher tortoise habitat. The invasive ordinance was an attempt to set up and call out a more formal program to control them. Making a minimal change to 905.2E, Section 5, is assuring its obscurity once more. It will be lost.
I'm sorry, your time is approaching the end. Excuse me.
And that you reconsider a proactive approach.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Please respect the timing. Everybody else has to. All right? Thank you. Who's next?
That's the only person I have signed up to speak for comment, but if you can check to see if anyone else would like to, please.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on something that's not on today's agenda? Okay, thank you. All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Economic Growth Department. The first item is PC 1, which is P E G 247807. It's a special exception in the name of Lake Shore Boulevard LLC. The request is to continue the item to the August 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Okay.
And the applicant for that item is virtually present.
Okay, is anyone here to speak or object? Okay, next one.
Following item is item PC 2, which is P E G 247783. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Dejean and Gordana Boujanovic, and it is for a change in zoning from AR with conditions to AR District. The request is to continue the item to the September 19th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
What was that date again? I'm sorry.
September 19th, 2024, 1:30 Newport Ritchie.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anybody here to object? Okay, see no one?
Item PC 3 is P E G 247800. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Pasco Window and Door Plus More LLC. The request is to continue the item to the August 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
And is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objection?
Following item is PC 4, which is P E G 247739. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Fletcher MPUD, Mary L. Fletcher Revocable Trust, and Richard D. Fletcher. The request is to continue the item to the August 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Okay. Is that applicant present? Anybody here to object? See no objections?
On PC 5, you're sitting as the local planning agency on this item. It's P E G 240354, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, see pass 2409 for the REG parcel. The request is to continue the item to the August 22nd, 2024 Local Planning Agency meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Say it again, the date? I'm sorry.
August 22nd, 2024, 1:30 PM, Newport Ritchie.
All right. And anybody here to speak on this one? See no one?
Following item, you're also sitting as the local planning agency on this item, PC 6, P E G 240413. It's an ordinance by the Board of County Commissioners modifying 604, the Northeast Pasco Rural Protection overlay district boundary and some maps within 604. The request is to continue the item to the August 22nd, 2024 Local Planning Agency meeting at 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
Okay. Anyone here to speak on this one? See no one?
On PC 7, you're also sitting as a local planning agency. It's P E G 240336. It's an ordinance modifying the Land Development Code, creating standards for car wash facilities. The request is to continue the item to the August 8th, 2024 Local Planning Agency meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to speak on this one?
On the following item, PC 8, you are also sitting as a local planning agency. It's P E G 240379. It's for an ordinance modifying Section 802 Tree Preservation and Replacement. The request is to continue the item to the September 5th, 2024 Local Planning Agency meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Okay. Anybody here to speak on that one?
That's the end of your continuance items.
Okay.
Just a question, Denise. A lot of these venues seem like they're off. So we have Dade City, where it's a West Side thing and vice versa. Looks like PC 1, PC 2, PC 3, PC 5, PC 6. All of those are kind of flip-flopped. So what was the reason?
Right, so PC 1, there is a rezoning that's going together with that one, and we wanted to keep them so that they end at the same Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Okay.
PC 2 is actually on the correct side. What was the other one? I'm so sorry.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Northwest. I was reading Northeast.
Yeah.
PC 3?
PC 3, that is another one that we want to... It'll go to the board meeting at the correct location, I suppose. It's a consent item at this point in time. Typically, we do tell our applicants, because there is the possibility of folks can sign up to speak, or you can also do things on WebEx. If we tell our applicants that if it's a regular item, we usually continue it to the side of the county that it's more closest to. The other ones, which I guess are PC 5, PC 6, those will have a B C C meeting on the East Side as well. It's just an L P A meeting, and those are actually the... They're extending the maps for the Northeast Rural, and one is down comp planning to Res 1 from a higher density. Was there another one? I'm sorry.
No, it was at 5 and 6 was the only...
Okay, does that resolve your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we have opportunity for the public to speak on it.
So we can have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion, as long as Denise will confirm my dates. Confirm PC 1 to August 8th, PC 2 to September 19th, PC 3 to August 8th, PC 4 to August 8th, PC 5 to August 22nd, PC 6 to August 22nd, PC 7 to August 8th, and PC 8 to September 5th.
Confirmed.
Second.
You have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay.
Right, we're moving on to item PC 9, which is P E G 247801, it's a zoning amendment, affordable secure storage, for a change in zoning from an I-1 light industrial park district to a C-2 general commercial district, with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction to limit those... Reserving those uses for those uses within the C-2 district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no objections?
Following item is PC 10. Oh, and I should also mention that there is no one signed up to speak on WebEx on that item. And on any of the items for that matter.
Okay.
Item PC 10 is P E G 247804. It's a zoning amendment, Anthony Gado. It's for a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district to an I-1 light industrial park district, with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction, reserving those uses for those uses within the I-1 district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
And is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay.
PC 11 is P E G 247802. It's a zoning amendment, Hudson Group Partners LLC, SR 52 Storage Retail, for a change in zoning from an MF1 multiple-family medium-density district to a C-2 general commercial district, with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction limiting those uses or reserving those uses for the C-2 district uses. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right. PC 11, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay.
PC 12 is P E G 247805. It's a zoning amendment under LS McAmis, Blue Sky Storage, for a change in zoning from an RMH Mobile Home District to a C-2 general commercial district, with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction, reserving those uses for those uses consistent with the C-2 district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
PC 12, is applicant present? Anyone here to object? Is there somebody that raised their hand back there? No? No? Okay. All right.
PC 13 is P E G 247806. It's a zoning amendment, Lake Shore Boulevard LLC, for a change in zoning from a PO2 professional office and MF2 multiple-family high-density districts to a C1 neighborhood commercial district, with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction, reserving those uses for those uses consistent with the C1 district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval, and the applicant is virtually present.
I'd like to hear that one. Okay, we'll pull that one, PC 13. We'll go into the regular items.
And the following item is PC 14, and that's P E G 247740. This is a zoning amendment, residences at Rolling Hills MPUD Master Planning Unit Development, Dan Nico Properties LLC. It's for a rezoning from an MF1 multiple-family medium-density district to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development to allow for 132 multifamily units, 104 senior apartments, 3,600 square feet of medical office, and a minimum of 3,000 square feet of retail uses on approximately 9.87 acres. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet, and those conditions do also include the conditions related to the Live Local Act.
Okay. Applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay.
And that is the end of your consent agenda.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve PC 9, PC 10, PC 11, PC 12, and PC 14 under the consent.
Second.
You have a motion in a second? Any further discussion of that motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, what would you like to do? Would you like the presentation on PC 15, or would you like to move on to PC 13?
Let's just do the PC 13.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Liam Devine, Planning and Economic Growth Department. This is PC 13, P E G 24-7806, in the name of Lake Shore Boulevard LLC. It is a Euclidean zoning amendment from PO2 professional office and MF2 multifamily high-density district, and it's rezoning to C1 neighborhood commercial district. The future land use on the subject site is ROR under the comprehensive plan. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to C1 for the purpose to submit a special exception to develop the property with a freestanding boat and RV storage facility, in conformance with C1 neighborhood commercial district standards, and the special exceptions, conditions of approval, of course. The subject site is located on the west side of Lake Shore Boulevard, approximately 233 feet southwest of 5A Road. The subject site is located in the West Market area and the urban service area. Here is a context map for us. The nearest trail is located along 5A Road, which is to the northeast. Here's a zoomed-in aerial view. The surrounding future land use to the northeast, south, and west is all ROR, and the surrounding zoning to the north is MF2 and C1, to the east is PUD, to the south is MF2, and to the west is R2. The subject site consists of a one-story concrete block building, which was formerly used as a notary and fingerprinting service office. Access to the property is from Lake Shore Boulevard. And as stated before, the nearest trail is 5A Road, which is about 260 feet northeast. And this is coming with a recommendation of approval. I'm here if you have any questions.
All right, any questions? John?
I don't have any questions for staff. I'll let the applicant make their presentation.
Okay. All right, anybody else? No? Okay. All right. So if the applicant would like to make a presentation on the application? Applicant present?
Yes, online.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is Ava Russo. The address is 1009 Gallant Lane, and that's Tampa, Florida, code 33625. I am an E I working under the responsibility of Michael Hoffman, and I'll be representing the applicant and advanced engineering consultants. The proposed project involves rezoning three parcels, which are a total of 3.62 acres from PO2 and MF2 to C1. The purpose of the rezoning is to accommodate the addition of a freestanding recreational vehicle... The purpose of the rezoning is to accommodate the addition of a freestanding recreational vehicle and boat storage facility while also keeping the existing medical office, um, that's currently on the site. For LDC section five, two, five dot four, self-storage facilities and freestanding recreational vehicle and boat storage is permitted within the C-one zoning as a special exemption use. A special exemption has been applied for concurrently with this rezoning and will be attending the public hearing for that on August eighth, as you've heard. Um, adjacent parcel to the northeast is currently zoned as C-one, demonstrating the commercial compatibility within the area. We believe this transition aligns with the evolving needs in the community and brings a mix of commercial and professional services while maintaining the surrounding land use patterns. Um, there are approximately one point two two acres of category three wetlands on the site, twenty-five-foot wetlands. That back has been included, um, to mitigate potential impacts. Retention will also be provided on-site to accommodate for the additional impervious. There is a separate entrance for the RV and boat storage facility, which will have a gate and also a fire truck turnaround for emergency access. And the required seventy-five-foot separation from the gate to the right-of-way has been considered as well. Um, the property is going to follow all C-one standards, as well as provide a type D landscape buffer to the north, south, and west, and a type D buffer to the east. Um, we are aware that the special exemption application is contingent on approval of this rezoning. Staff has found this approvable and we kindly request your approval as well. Thank you for your time, I'll take any questions.
Okay. Questions?
So, the reason I pulled this is I don't feel like it's appropriate to hear the zoning without the special exception request. That is the reason that they're asking for this rezoning. In other words, what, if we don't approve the special exception request, maybe we didn't want to approve this change to C-one from PO. I'm particularly concerned to see the site plan for the special exception because I see that access to that site can be somewhat hindered to, from the location of the median opening on Lake Shore. Also, Lake Shore is in deplorable condition, the condition of the road is deplorable, to say the least. So, I don't want to deny this request today, but my personal preference would be to continue this to when we hear the special exception so that we can hear the two cases together and then vet the special exception and determine whether or not we want to change the zoning.
Okay. Liam, you want to address that?
If I can, that'd be great, thank you. Um, so, there was a noticing error with the special exception. The rezoning was, um, noticed properly, the special exception had an error, there was a typo. Um, our request for the special exception, um, application was to the eighth. That would have been brought before you, before the rezoning goes in front of the Board of County Commissioners. So essentially, you could still hear the special exception before the board hears the rezoning. And that was intentional, in case, for whatever reason, there's added conditions or the special exception does not get approved, the applicant could withdraw their rezoning application for consideration.
I understand that, but I don't think that gives the Planning Commission the opportunity to vet the case and make a recommendation with all the facts before it.
Agreed.
Understood.
Okay. Thanks, Liam. All right, is there anybody else in, on the floor out there that has a comment, a question? Anybody here further? If not, John?
I'd move that we continue this case until the August eighth meeting in Date City.
I'll second that.
You have a motion in a second? Is there further discussion on that motion?
Does that affect noticing at all? Are we good there? Does that affect noticing at all?
It does not affect noticing.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second? And there's no further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay. Now we continue to win?
All states.
All right.
All right, Mr. Chair, the following item is PC fifteen.
The lighting.
Is it the lights, the lighting? Mood lighting, I guess, yeah. Yeah.
Well, they know how to come as.
Is that what they call? They do this more often. What is it?
And in PC fifteen, um, the school impact fee.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe this is being presented by Mr. Gad.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I can't resist making a personal comment. I'm an avid quail hunter and I have very little sympathy for the eastern diamondback rattler.
I'm with you.
They don't taste bad either.
I've met three of them in my lifetime, I don't want to meet anymore.
Yeah, that's more than enough.
This is my last hurrah, this is the third impact fee I've worked on. And I'm retiring in September. The people that are with me today have done all the heavy lifting and I just wanted an opportunity to address the Planning Commission one last time. I want to tell you who's with us. We have over here our Assistant Superintendent Betsy Coon, who's done a lot of heavy lifting on this impact fee. Tammy Taylor, our CFO. And our outstanding Vice Chair on the School Board, Allison Crumley. We also have Cynthia Armstrong here. I think a lot of you know her on our school board.
Never heard of her, never heard of her.
She's been a great friend to the school system. And Colleen Bodwin from Central Pasco. We also have two of our Oversight Committee members on the, um, um, Penny for Pasco Oversight Committee, and that's Hugh Townsend, who I'm sure you've seen here before.
Yes, we have.
And Tom Skrakow, who currently chairs our Penny for Pasco Oversight Committee. The last time we, um, commissioned a impact fee study was two thousand and seventeen. That was the third one that I've worked on. I'm proud to say that in every impact fee we passed, three of them, the Builders, Tampa Bay Builders Association, at one time it was the Pasco Builders Association, has stood side by side with us at the podium in front of the County Commission and has supported our, um, fee. The same is true today, I thought Edward Briggs was going to be here, he represents the Tampa Bay Builders Association. I don't think he's in the audience.
He's here, he stepped out, he stepped out, uh, he's on the phone call, but he's here.
But I know that he has sent you the letter of support from the Tampa Bay Builders Association. I want you to know that before we commissioned this study, we brought the Tampa Bay Builders Association into our office and asked them, is it, was there anything in particular we wanted to focus on? Was there anything in particular that they wanted us to do relative to the impact fee study? And they had a few questions, uh, we took those to heart. We completed the impact fee study. Then we had a, a Zoom meeting with them and about four to five days later, they voted in an open board meeting to fully support the impact fee. The impact fee is incremental at a thousand dollars a year. And as you know, the legislature has changed the rules related to impact fees so that impact fees can not exceed fifty percent of the difference between the existing impact fee and the new recommended impact fee. We fall under that and we're doing an incremental impact of a thousand dollars a year. If you ask, where did that come from? It was arbitrary, we sat down with the builders and we wanted to stay under the statutory limits and a thousand dollars a year looked good. Now, we have not met with folks from the multifamily apartment business. They don't have local representation, as far as I know, uh, but they have a group that comes out of Miami. And as a, I think somewhat humorous aside, David Goldstein will remember this. In two thousand and seventeen, when we increased the impact fee, the multifamily folks showed up here and said it would be devastating to the construction of apartments in Pasco County. I find that humorous, given what's happened since two thousand and seventeen. And we have not met with any folks from the mobile home community. Uh, our impact fee consultant is here with us today, Carson Vice, right here. Uh, we paid for him to come here, so I invite you to ask him the toughest questions you can possibly ask him. He tells me he's good at dancing, I'd like to see a little bit of it.
Oh, there you go, where's the music?
Chris Williams and Betsy Coon can both tell you what we're facing in square foot cost. I think there's, every one of you up there knows what we're facing in terms of square foot cost. Over the past ten years, our square foot costs to build a school have almost doubled. In two thousand and seventeen, we paid a hundred and seventy-eight dollars a square foot to build Cypress Creek Middle. We, we are now running around three thirty, three thirty-five. And we actually built a building not long ago that was around three ninety a square foot. So the impact fee is very much needed and I'm pleased that the sales tax passed again. Cause I think it will help us keep up in Pasco County relative to growth. So without further ado, I'd like to bring Carson Vice up. If you have any questions for him and.
I, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Gad.
Okay.
So how many years have you been with the School Board now?
Over forty years.
Over forty years, hmm.
I thought you'd beat me out.
Well. I think I just did. I didn't quit yet. No, I, I just wanted to, uh, say in front of everybody, you know, how much, I think we all, and especially me, appreciate the work you've done over the years. You've always been a great person to work with, you've always been considerate of everybody's concerns and, and you've done a masterful, I think, and very professional and courteous, uh, job, uh, with the, with the School Board. And taken real heart and to the, uh, betterment of Pasco County. And I, I think it's really a credit to, to you and, and to all the people that are here with you today to, uh, to say thank you. And, uh, I'm sure we'll find something for you to do, you know, in the coming months and years. So, just stay, stay tuned.
Well, ditto to you because I feel the same about you, Chuck.
Thank you very much, Ray. Thank you so much.
An institution in this community. I've enjoyed working with you.
Thank you, man. Okay, so who's the next victim?
Thanks, Ray. I'm Carson Vice with Tischler Vice, we're based in Bethesda, Maryland, and Boise, Idaho. And I'm assuming I can, yeah, there we go.
Right next to each other.
What's that?
Maryland and Idaho, right?
Yeah. A lot of diversity.
Drive to work.
A lot of diversity, uh, between the two states. Uh, anyway, the joke in Boise is, is that it's California's fifth largest city. Which is why we have an office there, so. Uh, a little bit about us, uh, our firm, as I said, is based in Bethesda, Maryland, and Boise, Idaho. And we have a unique specialty on cost of growth issues, specifically impact fees and infrastructure financing strategies, as well as, as fiscal and economic impact analysis. And we've done more of this type of work than, than any firm in the country and we've got considerable, uh, school impact fees experience here in the state of Florida. Uh, a little bit about the Pasco County School Impact Fee. Uh, nothing has changed relative to the components that's within the calculation. It does have, uh, the cost of construction of additional classroom space. Uh, it also has a land component, it also has a component for buses. Uh, we use what we call the consumption-based or incremental expansion approach, very standard for impact fees, particularly schools, where we take a snapshot of the current level of service as it relates to, uh, you know, the size, the average size of, like, an elementary school, uh, student seats, what does it cost to build that seat, what does it cost to buy land, et cetera. Uh, and then we also have to guard against new development paying twice through credits or offsets. Uh, so as part of this calculation, uh, we've been very generous with the credits and have actually given more than legally that we would, we would be required to do. Uh, but we want to err on the side of being conservative, so we have credits for future payments on, on existing debt issuances. Uh, we have future capital outlay and debt service revenue, a credit for that. A credit for future Penny for Pasco sales tax revenue, as well as a credit for, uh, future local capital improvement millage revenue. Uh, as the first step in, in conducting an impact fee analysis, we have to determine what the demand indicators are. And for, uh, school capacity, it's the number of public school age children, uh, per housing unit. And so we calculated these student generation rates, shown in the green column here, by type of, uh, housing unit using geo-coded data provided by the School Board. So it is Pasco County-specific, it's not the, the US Census, uh, public use microsample data for the county. It's actually based on, uh, the geo-coded data provided by the, the School Board. And then by applying, uh, these student generation rates to the increase, the projected increase in housing units over the next ten years, we are projecting an additional thirteen thousand, seven hundred, uh, school students in the Pasco County school system. So this slide here shows planned permanent capacity additions, uh, and the focus of these are, are on the first, or the initial five years. And I'll get into that here in a second. Uh, but there's three or four projects here, uh, with a total, uh, additional student seats of forty-one hundred and sixty. And one of those, the Dayspring Angeline, is a charter school that will receive impact fee funding. And then what we do is we program in these planned capacity additions and then compare that to the enrollment projection. And it's kind of hard to read from here, but there's, there's two circles here, and that's why I brought my computer with me so I can actually read you the numbers. But with the planned expansions over the next ten years, at the K through eight level, uh, even with that addition of thirty-five hundred and sixty public seats, not including the charter school seats, uh, the, the K through eight system will be at ninety-nine percent of capacity. Now, if we didn't add any of these seats at all, we would be at a hundred and five percent capacity. Although we don't have additional student seats programmed in the CIP for high schools, it's clear, uh, from the bottom chart that additional high school capacity will be needed in the next ten years and we expect the school, uh, district to come forward with plans for additional seats, whether they're classroom additions, uh, or a brand-new school. Uh, but we would be at hundred percent capacity, uh, at the end of the, uh, the ten-year period without additional seats. Uh, here's the component for land. Again, we like to be, uh, conservative with our assumptions and rather than project the future cost of land, uh, we look at, well, what has the district paid for over the last four or five years, either through purchases, uh, or, or land that's under contract, or through impact fee credits. And so we've got five examples here that were the total cost of fourteen point two million, uh, for a total of two hundred and thirty-seven acres. And so that results in a weighted cost per acre of fifty-nine thousand, uh, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. And then we also have a cost of construction. And that is based on these planned, uh, projects. Uh, we've got a weighted average cost of three hundred and sixty-one dollars a square foot when we look at these four, uh, capacity additions. And then finally, there is a cost for buses within the, uh, the analysis and we look at the total inventory of buses and what does it cost to purchase tomorrow, uh, or today, uh, which is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And we get our cost per student by comparing that to existing enrollment. And then finally, uh, this table here walks you through from top to bottom. Basically, it's a summary of all of these different slides that I've shown you to date. Uh, the top part of the, the slide shows the student generation rates that we discussed in the beginning. And then we walk ourselves down through these levels of service for PK through eight, as well as high school in terms of the cost per, uh, student for, uh, building construction, the cost per student for land, the cost for buses. And so we get that total, that gross capital cost per student of fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight for PK through eight and forty-six thousand, eight seventy-nine at the high school level. And from that, we then deduct those credits that I mentioned. Uh, and so we get a, uh, net local capital cost of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars uh, for the, like, PK through eight and then, uh, thirty-seven, thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one, uh, at the, um, uh, K through, or, uh, nine through twelve, uh, fee level. So the next slide is the maximum supportable impact fee. And so, uh, Mr. Gad mentioned that there's a. And so Mr. Gad mentioned that there's a statutory limit. The Act, Impact Fee Act, was changed about three or four years ago, which limits the increases for impact fees, and it also limits the, the, how often you can do the studies. You have to do it, or the, the fees have to, you can't do a study except for every four years. And some jurisdictions, like Osceola and a few others, are doing them every two or three years. But you can see here in the green column, the maximum supportable fee for a single-family unit is $13,613, multifamily is $6,576, and mobile home is $6,666. And the changes to the Impact Fee Act state that if you're going to increase the impact fees between 0 and 25%, they have to be done in two annual equal increments. If we're going to go between 25 and 50%, it has to be over a four-year or four equal increments. And as you can see here in the, sort of the salmon-colored column, that we are exceeding the 25% increase for all three housing types. And the statutory limits are there, shown in blue, where the maximum supportable was 13,613, but are, were statutorily capped at 12,492. And finally, as Mr. Gad mentioned, there was negotiations with the home builders, and this shows you the recommended impact fee compared to the maximum supportable and the statutory, statutorily limited fee. And so we are proposing these $1,000 increases over a four-year period. So the single-family fee would be 900, or $9,328 in year one, and would ratchet up to $12,328 by the end of the four-year period. Multifamily would be capped out over the four-year period at 6389, and a mobile home at 64,000, or 6,477. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the planning commission may have.
I had a couple.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I don't, you couldn't have done that good a job.
He's good, but not that good. One, could you explain the, the credit for existing debt payments? Because it almost sounds like that's a payment being made by the school board out as opposed to money coming in. So is that revenue that's coming in from existing geo bonds, or?
So if I, if I pay an impact fee, I'm also paying property tax that goes to retire that debt, but also property tax in the future that may go to retire future debt. And I'm also generating sales tax money that you're going to use to retire bonds as well.
Okay.
Or, or use for school construction. So the, the existing debt credit includes debt that's being retired with sales tax bonds, as well as certificates of participation and bonds backed by property tax.
Gotcha.
Then there's a credit for future revenue, which would be the future sales tax that you could use for capacity, and future local capital improvement millage that you could use for future capacity.
So it's a decrease in the payments that the school board's making on these general obligations?
Right.
Okay. And then the other question I, I had was on the, I think it was a previous slide where it's showing the maximum change. Maximum change is 50%, but on multifamily and mobile home, you have it at 35 and 30%. So I was just curious why that was listed there. The statutory limit was listed lower.
So the statute, so we can't, we can't increase more than 50% without providing for extraordinary circumstances, where there's a process you can go to, and some jurisdictions have done that. So the, while the maximum supportable is 13,613, if we cap it at the 50%, it's 12,492.
Right, yeah, I got that.
Yeah.
But the two, the two below that, so the cap would actually, the statutory limit would actually be higher than what's being recommended?
Right.
Okay. So statutory limit on that's actually $8,000 for the multifamily, for example?
Right.
Okay. So that's just an incorrect number in that column?
No. I think, I think, I think you're, are you just asking why didn't we go to the max?
Well, no, I'm just asking why the statutory limit was listed as lower. It was listed as 35 and 30% there.
But that's, that's the percentage change, not the statutory limit.
I understand.
It's just the increase.
But, so the, the total is 6576, and so the current fee is 4844. The difference was 1,692.
Carson, I can maybe?
$2,400 would have been the statutory limit.
He's saying the statutory limit is actually higher than your maximum supportable fee for multifamily and mobile homes. Right, right. But we can't justify, we can't justify the 50%.
Understood, yeah, understood.
Yeah.
So that was, that was my only, you know, I just thought that was, the numbers were off, so. All right. Yeah.
So one question, Mr. Bice. You mentioned that Dayspring Angeline is eligible for impact fees. Is that because of kind of the unique nature of it with Angeline's public fees, you know, fields being there? Is that, is that typical for charter schools to be able to get impact fees?
Well, there was a change in legislation that now allows that.
Okay.
Now, I haven't seen it widely used, and I don't know the particulars of why this one is, is receiving the impact fees. Perhaps Chris or Mr. Gad could answer that.
One of us can. I'll let Mr. Gad.
You don't want to fall in that trap, do you? By the way, Mr. Williams could easily explain that. The Pasco County School Board has taken a position that we don't want to be unfriendly or in opposition to charter schools. And charter schools can help us with growth. And so, oh, three or four years ago, we started reaching out to charter schools. And one of the things we were trying to do is control the type of charter schools that we have in our county. So we reached out to homegrown, effective charter schools like Dayspring and said, would you want to enter into a cooperative relationship with us? The statutes allow impact fees to be used to build charter schools. So we now have agreements with a couple of charter schools, and they're interesting agreements, and I don't want to go into too much detail, but you might say, public money or impact fee money is being used to fund these charter schools. But we also have contracts with them that say, should they fail, for example, or go bankrupt, that those schools return to us. We have what's called a step-in agreement. And we are unique in the state in terms of what we are doing with these schools. We're probably only going to do two or three and see if it works out. A lot of the builders, in particular, I don't want to single them out, but Lennar has, for example, a strong relationship with charter schools, and so we've worked with them. And our feeling is, is that if we can boost the local charter schools like Dayspring, then we keep the big corporate charter schools out of our county, and we can have a closer working relationship with the local folks here in the community. And so we've started this process. We, you probably won't see anymore for years, because we want to see one actually get up and running so that we can make sure it works. We have maintenance agreements with them, insurance agreements with them, cooperative curriculum agreements, and sharing agreements with them. But we are unique across the state in terms of doing this. We're not the only one that does it, but our system for doing this is very unique, and the contracts that we have are very unique. Does that answer the question?
Ray, does that basically work as a, almost like a lien on the property for the impact fees that are paid? So if the charter school fails, then?
Yeah, absolutely. Comes directly back to us. And, and we even have little things in there like, because there might, you know, the charter school might want to go out and expand, but if they want to go out and expand, they have to get our permission, because we don't want to be assuming they're dead. So say a charter school goes out and gets a second mortgage because they want to build a building, and then they fail, and we've got $5, $10 million in debt if we take that school back over. So we actually have contracts with them where they basically have to come to us. We allow them to operate freely as a charter school should, but we're not going to allow them to put us in a debt situation. So we have a lot of little agreements like that in the contracts.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great system, honestly.
I will, I will thank you for making Dayspring Angeline your first one, because my family would personally benefit from it, so it's, I appreciate that.
So are you saying you can't vote on this?
I guess, I guess that's.
Well, and, you know, I will tell you, we recently had a controversial one, which was a Patel school, because we gave them some land to build a school. And I realize why it's controversial. It's unique and different. People have different perspectives about charter schools. But to build a high school these days, you know, you're talking about anywhere from 67, 70 million to $100 million. And so we recently agreed with the charter school to give them a little bit of land, and they're going to spend $50 million building, you know, a school, which is $50 million off our books. And at the end of the day, I think it's important to remember that charter schools, in my opinion, are here to stay, and many of them are doing a great job, especially the Daysprings of the world, doing an incredible job. And what a lot of people don't know is that some charter schools kind of, even though there's a lottery, they cherry pick their kids. I think last time I looked at Dayspring, their low-income population was about 42%. And they are notoriously an A school. Am I wrong?
From what I understand, that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm, I'm on the Angeline side, so I benefit from, from the athletic field at the, at the facility.
At Angeline, great complex. And that's a new experiment as well. So we think we're saving the taxpayers money. We're going to find out pretty soon.
Well, charter schools already share with the voucher program, so it only makes sense for impact money to go there as well.
Good job, Ray.
All right, thank you.
And I think that's exactly what you were going to say, right, Chris?
That's correct. Yes. I mean, and the one thing I would emphasize is that when we do these, again, we have a step-in agreement. If a charter school comes and we don't have a part, any kind of relation with them, and they fail, then, then we're having to figure out where all those kids are going to go. But with these, where we are trying to control a few of these, if they do fail, and we're not necessarily anticipating they are, but if they do, we get, we get the building, we have a place to put all of those kids.
Teachers still have jobs.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. And for those of you who don't know, there may be a few of you who don't know, Chris Williams is a representative for the school system on our board, so, and we depend on his wisdom to point us in the right direction.
That's right.
Oh, boy. Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Allison?
Just briefly.
Welcome, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Allison Crumple.
You always do such a good job.
I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah.
Likewise. 10811, Panicum Court, I assume you need that. And thank you, Honorable Chairman Gray and Attorney Goldstein, and honorable members. Appreciate it. I'm, I'm going to recap on a few things, and I appreciate my fellow, two of my fellow board members being here, because we are all so strongly behind this. And I just want to remind, the proposed increase will assist with keeping up with our construction costs in our growing school district. We now have almost 90,000 students, in case that's a new number to you. When I started here, Gulf High, and they just built Hudson, so quite, we've come quite the way. Impact fees allow the school district to balance building new schools to support new growth while allowing us to renovate our existing schools with the Penny for Pasco funds. As you know, both are equally important. And as someone who went to high school on double sessions and the 4515 plan, don't let that for anybody else. It was not good for students. We appreciate the support from the Tampa Bay Builders Association and their strong stance that good schools build strong communities. So again, just thank you very much on behalf of my board. Appreciate it. Thanks.
You said you're at 90,000 now?
Nearly. That includes charters.
Okay.
Yeah, nearly 90,000 now. I know. So, growing every day.
That's right.
So thank you guys, so, thank you all so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman Gray, honorable members of the committee. Almost like old times, you as chair, I was seated in one of those, and Ray was over where Chris was. But today, I, Hugh Townsend, 9701 Hermosolo Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34655, rise to speak in support of this impact fee. Back in 2017, I was vice chair of the Committee of Citizens, Builders, and School Personnel that worked out the details of the first impact fee, or the impact fee at that time, before the pandemic, before the increase that we now see to construction. We need to keep up to date and increase what we're looking at, what we have been receiving in order to provide quality education to our students. I, at fair disclosure, I'm vice chair of the Penny for Pasco, so I see how the money's being utilized and indeed properly utilized. As a slightly funny aside, anyone that doesn't want to pay the impact fee can easily buy an existing home. Both my children bought existing homes, both now have built brand-new homes in Starkey. But my oldest daughter and her husband went out to dinner with my wife and I just as we were concluding the impact fee in 2017. And they had some great news to tell us, and I had some great news to tell them that we negotiated a deal. Well, they started first, and they told me they were just looking into and signing to build a brand-new house in Starkey Ranch. I picked up the dinner tab that night. But everybody's happy. My grandchildren are going to Starkey. Everything is wonderful. And I truly hope that we can put this on the books and move forward so that we can continue to have excellent education here in Pasco County. Any questions?
Does that mean you're buying us all dinner tonight?
Well, if you all are going to buy new, and build new homes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
It's great to see you again. Great to see you again. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Edward Briggs, 3812 Coconut Palm Drive, Tampa, Florida, representing the Tampa Bay Builders Association. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but did want to come up and speak. We just appreciate the opportunity from Ray Gad, his wonderful staff, the board members to work with them comprehensively on this. They came to us very early on, which I know is hard when you come to the builder and say, hey, we want to raise impact fees. Everyone kind of freaks out. But we appreciate the opportunity to work with them. We think the compromise given to you all on the phase-in is really well. We, we understand the importance of schools in our community for, for us and for our buyers and everything. So thank you so much for having us be here today.
I appreciate you coming. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name's Tom Skaretko. I live at 1549 Arlington Oaks Court, Trinity, Florida, 34655. First of all, I want you to know, I told Hugh Townsend to keep his presentation very short, because he likes to talk.
Thank you.
I am chairman of the Penny for Pasco Oversight Committee. What you all have heard, the committee has already heard, and I'll keep my comments short. I, too, as a member of the Penny for Pasco Oversight Committee, and all the committee members, we urge you to approve this increase in the impact fee fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right. That being the case.
So on this item, you're sitting as a local planning agency. We're asking that you find the proposed ordinance consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval to the, to the Board of County Commissioners. On this item, the first reading is scheduled for August 6, 2024, at 1:30 p.m. in Dade City, and the adoption is scheduled for August 21, 2024, at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
All right. I have a motion.
Item PC 15.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a multiple second. All in favor? So you can find by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Okay, motion carries.
Tough raising taxes, but unfortunately, inflation's affected everybody, so, and that includes buying schools and property and everything else, so we've got to do what needs to be done, take care of our kids.
Well, I'll send you my share of the bill. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it. Is anything else, Denise?
That's all we've got.
Not, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're gone.